Meet the needs of the families as well as individuals in our community. The employee campaign's been going since 2011. And every contribution that an employee of Olmsted County makes is directly makes an impact here locally. In the last few years, we've seen some significant drops in contributions as well as participation. We think that's an impact of COVID, but this year we're really hoping to increase our participation by about 5% of employees. Our employee campaign will run from October 10th through the 21st. We have lots of department level activities that'll be going on, some bingo, some bake sales, some cornhole tournaments, as well as our large parking auction that will take place where we auction off three premium parking spots at three different county locations. One including the government centers, that one's usually a high draw. And if you want to get a better sense of what United Way Olmsted County is doing, I really encourage you to check out the website. They have some great little videos out there and you can see that at uwolmsted.org. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Sharing the campaign.
Yeah. Any more public comment? Alright, so change here, we'll call it in order, start with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we start out with a consent agenda. Approve the September 10th county board minutes. Proclaim October 12th Financial Worker in Case Aid Day. Proclaim October Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Proclaim October National Community Planning Month. Authorize the Reading Center budget. Accept the 2023 Towards Zero Deaths Enforcement Grant Award. Approve gambling permit for the Parents of Graduating Seniors Incorporated. Get a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes. Next up, discussion decision items. First up, administrators showcase health, housing, and human services.
Good morning Chairman of the Board, Commissioners Denise Daniels, Director of Public Health. I have the good fortune this morning to be able to introduce our Administrator Showcase from Health, Housing, and Human Services this morning. This morning, we have our Women Infant and Children, otherwise known as WIC program here to share with you many of the, much of the work that they do. I want to just commend this team, very innovative, agile, flexible in the last couple of years as they've navigated pandemic and still getting out and reaching the clients that need them the most. So this morning Wendy O'Leary, who is the Program Manager from WIC, is going to provide the Administrator Showcase. So Wendy?
Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners, I am Wendy O'Leary. I also have two other staff with me today, which I do want to introduce, Susan Esfaso. She is another dietitian and she leads our Breastfeeding Peer Counselor Program and is a WIC supervisor. And Janet Stammer, one of our dietitians who is another supervisor.
Great.
So I'm going to start off with just a quick review of what WIC is. I'm not sure how familiar you are with the program and a little bit about what we do and why we do it. And we're going to have a quick video which does it much better than I do. I dare you to not have that tune in your brain test. At least it's heavy.
You can just replace it with "It's a Small World."
Shame on you. Both of them in my head.
Alright, so that was a quick overview of what the program is and what we do. And on some of the slides, I'm including some quotes from our clients. We do have a client satisfaction survey that goes out to all of our clients. And I thought it would be fun to include some of the quotes that we hear from our clients to give you some feedback as well on our program. Like the video said, there are some great advantages to the WIC program. And we know that children who are enrolled in our program, they do have healthier diets, including things like more iron in their diet, lower added sugars, and a greater variety of foods. And as well as children who are enrolled in WIC are more likely to receive prenatal, I mean not prenatal, immunizations and while child checkups as well compared to those who are not on WIC. So we're excited to have those outcomes. We also know that women who participate in WIC for three months or more of their pregnancy have fewer premature births and infant deaths. They have reduced rates of low birth weight and greater likelihood of receiving prenatal care, which also then saves on healthcare dollars. Alright, we do have a number of program measures that we follow in WIC. And I'm going to just speak to a couple of them right now. First of all is caseload, you may be interested to know how many clients we serve. We served 3,028 participants last month, which is our highest number since 2017, and a 10% increase in the last two and a half years. Then we also have several breastfeeding measures that we follow. The first one being initiation of breastfeeding. And right now, we have 90% of our participants starting off breastfeeding, which is just phenomenal. And we have a lot of support that we do during our appointments and with our peer counselors to support continuation of breastfeeding. Another measure that we follow is the percent of women who exclusively breastfeed in the hospital. And the reason this is important is that research shows us that women who exclusively breastfeed in the hospital and don't use formula during those first few critical days have better breastfeeding success. They're more likely to meet their breastfeeding goals and have a longer duration of breastfeeding. Now, this is an area where we have a lot of work to do. Right now, we're at 34% of our participants exclusively breastfeeding in the hospital. So we're working on that in our prenatal education, really trying to enhance and support and build up our participants so that they can have success in the hospital, kind of giving them some ideas of strategies when they meet certain obstacles during those first few days.
Question, a number of years ago, the caseloads appeared to be dropping. Glad to see that's come back. We knew the need was there, I mean, we investigated this a fair amount and had no explanation relative to the referrals or what happened. So do you have any insight as to what's happened in the intervening years as to why people have become, it was like WIC was invisible. There were a lot of people that could have or should have used the program and weren't.
Right, and I think that we're going to see in a couple of slides from now, one reason is just the, the time that it takes to enroll in WIC. We do know that children drop off of our program. We see a drop off when they turn one, we see another drop off when they turn two, and then so on. And they are eligible until they are five. So I think the time is part of that. And one thing that I think during COVID that we learned is these virtual appointments have been very valuable in that accessibility. And it has allowed a lot of, a lot of people to stay on the program longer.
Would you review with us who's eligible for WIC?
So it is women who are breastfeeding postpartum or pregnant. So postpartum up until six months, breastfeeding up until one year, infants and children up to age five.
Is there any income eligibility?
Income eligibility, yes. And they need to be at 185% of poverty or have enrollment into an adjunctive eligibility program, which would be things like medical assistance, Head Start, SNAP, and so on, there's a long list of programs. And live in Minnesota, you need to live here. Let's see, so I was talking about the breastfeeding rates. And one thing that we do to help improve our breastfeeding rates is our Breastfeeding Peer Counselor Program. This is a really popular program among staff and participants both. Breastfeeding peer counselors are recruited from the clients that we serve. And they have a successful breastfeeding experience. So they serve as role models for breastfeeding, providing mother-to-mother encouragement and support. So distinctly different than a provider or a dietitian to client support. This is someone like them and in the same community. They, yeah, go ahead.
I wondered if you noticed an increase in, in this, in interest in this one of the infant formula crisis.
Good, really good question too. We did, we, anecdotally, we did. We have not seen, we don't have those statistics yet from that time period. But anecdotally, definitely, we did have an increase of people during their pregnancy wondering, is, wondering if I want to even start formula at all. So they're recruited from the communities they serve, and then they are matched with participants. So participants and peer counselors are matched based on things like language or cultural needs, or maybe it's a breastfeeding need, like breastfeeding twins or breastfeeding as a twin, as a teen parent. They do have training and breastfeeding education, counseling skills, all sorts of things. And like I said, this is a really popular program among our participants. They really enjoy this support and it's made a big difference in our breastfeeding rates. This is a picture of our counselors right now, so just to get some eyes on them and the great group of ladies they are. And I'm just sharing one example of one of the outcomes of this program. Women who participate in the Breastfeeding Peer Counselor Program are significantly more likely to breastfeed, not only initially, but at all ages that are represented here. And you can see that it really has a big impact if they participate in this program. We do offer peer counselors to every participant. And we have about 75% of our participants that take advantage of this program. Alright, so our current services, right now, we do have some waivers. And those are tied to the COVID Public Health Emergency Declaration. And our waivers extend 90 days past the end of the emergency declaration. So right now, we have waivers until mid-January. And then in mid-October, we'll know if they are going to extend until April.
Could you remind us of what that, what that meant in terms of service, what the waiver allowed?
Yep, so the biggest thing that this means is that clients do not have to have measurements completed to participate in our program. So prior to COVID, height weights and hemoglobin were required to be on our program. And they could be done at a provider's office, but most likely, they would come to the WIC office to get those completed. Right now, those are not required as in-person, in-person appointments are also not required. So that is, right now, a big convenience. And it's really helped us meet the needs of our clients during COVID. We would not have been able to do it without these waivers.
Is that a federal requirement that's going away, our state requirement? And I think we've learned generally through COVID that being able to access services through telecommunications has been very helpful to many, many clients. So is that a state, is that something the state needs to, to extend, or is that a federal?
Federal, that is a federal requirement, yes. I don't see the height weight hemoglobin requirement going away. But I'm going to talk about in a couple of slides, some things, some ideas that we have to make that easier, to make that whole process easier. But there's a lot of other things that we've done at the federal level that could make it easier, yes. Let's see, so we have moved to a hybrid clinic because we do have many clients who would prefer to come in and see us in person. And they do really value those measurements. And it also helps guide our nutrition education. Not having a height weight and hemoglobin does inhibit some of the education we do provide. So we also look forward to having those measurements. So at the same time, they can, of course, continue with that option of a virtual appointment if they choose. A few things that we are doing to meet our client needs. First of all, we've had extended hours for quite some time, so not the traditional eight to five. We open at six, at, not 6:30. We open at 7:30. I think I'd have some unhappy staff if we did that. We open at 7:30 to catch that before work, you know, clients that need to stop in for something. And then we are open until six. And our, like, late afternoon, early appointment times really are our most sought-after appointments. More so before the pandemic than now with virtual appointments, but they're very popular and they fill up fast. So let's see, the after-hours, and then our lunch hour appointments. Our lunch hour appointments grew in popularity during our virtual appointments. More people seeking that over their lunch hour and things like that. So we've worked to expand the number of lunch hour appointments we have available as well. Our peer counselors are available 24/7. As you can imagine, breastfeeding problems don't just happen Monday, Friday, eight to five. So if a woman is experiencing concerns or problems on a Friday evening, it can't wait until Monday morning because by then, she may have given up. So it's really vital that our peer counselors have that ability to connect with clients anytime. We also now have an online application, which of course also helps prove accessibility and that's highly utilized by our clients as well. And we have pop-up clinics. So a pop-up WIC clinic is just like it sounds. We load up our WIC gear and we transport it and move it to a different location and serve clients at that location. This is something we started several years ago at Head Start. And we chose Head Start because it is an adjunctive eligibility program. So every child enrolled in Head Start is income eligible for WIC. So this has been extremely successful. We do have a survey that also goes out to all of our pop-up clinic clients. And from that survey, we learned several families shared that they find it difficult to coordinate time to get to WIC appointments. And having it available at Head Start was the reason they were able to get back on the program. Thirty-nine respondents to that survey said they felt they wouldn't be on WIC if it were not for the pop-up clinic. So I think that just speaks to that, the whole accessibility and catching clients where they're at to decrease the amount of time it takes to enroll in WIC. We have some pictures here from our 2022 clinic. And during this clinic, over three days, we connected with 165 families. Let's see, I'm trying to remember, 35 of which were not currently on the program. They had been on in the past but had fallen off, so we got them back on the program. And I think there was about nine families that had never been on WIC before that we were able to enroll in the program. So it was very successful. It's very fast-paced. You are tired after this day. Some impacts that we've had recently. We, as part of the WIC Benefit Flexibility During COVID-19 Act, there was an increase in the fruit and vegetable benefit. Prior to COVID, children received $9 for fruits and vegetables for the month. And I don't know about you, but I don't know any family where $9 per child is enough for fruits and vegetables for a month. So we're really excited to have this increase. It was due to end September 30th, but with the signing of the continuing resolution, it has now been extended to December. And children now receive $25 for fruits and vegetables per month. So a big improvement there. We really hope that this federally will be made permanent and that we don't have to keep going this three months at a time to let clients know if they're going to get this or not. And as was mentioned before, we had this little thing called the Formula Recall in shortage. And I'm not going to talk a lot about it, other than just to say, this was stressful time for our clients who use formula. And many concerns, much hesitancy around formula use. And our staff did a phenomenal job answering countless telephone calls and questions and, you know, just really concerned parents. So we're at a better place now. And there are still some medical formula availability issues. But when that happens, we work with providers in the state WIC office to find alternatives.
How do they monitor that they actually spend the money on just fruits and vegetables? How do they track that?
So with the, with WIC benefits, you'd get an E-WIC card, you know, similar to SNAP. And there are UPCs or there are requirements. The systems in each store are set up as such that it, you can only spend it on fruits and vegetables. You couldn't spend it on diapers, it won't go through. And Janet, if you can explain that any better, she's the, she's a guru.
Please come to the microphone.
Basically, every food item you get, cheese, milk, is all put on this card. And then the computer system makes it necessary for you to buy that item. So if it doesn't go through, then they get a mess, they, they get asked to pay for it at the store. So it's, so they have an app, which is really, really nice, that shows them exactly what they can get when they go to the store. And, and then they have a scanner on the app that they can scan the item to see before they even get up to the cash register whether they're going to be able to buy it. So it's really nice, so they can figure it out before they go up to the store. For the most part, they can figure it out so that they won't make a mistake and be embarrassed or whatever. So it's a really great system.
And it's integrated with the retailers now. Their scanners are fully integrated with the same, to know what you should have, what you should buy.
And every night, you know, stores are always getting new foods. So every night, then the store's computer system is updated with a new list of foods. So if there's something changed in the marketplace, it's a really great system, so much easier than the old days.
Removes the stigma also of having to separate that stuff and people knowing that low-income individual or WIC client, it's good.
Alright, so what's next? As we are looking forward to when our waivers end, we know that participants have loved this virtual visit. And we want to make the, you know, that transition as easy as possible so we can keep our families enrolled in the program. So right now, we're planning to have this WIC Your Way, which is three alternatives to how clients can complete the requirements to enroll in our program. The first is the traditional way, you can come into the office and do the entire appointment, get your measurements, get your education, and receive your benefits all at the same time. You can also schedule a virtual appointment. And then to complete things like the height weight hemoglobin, you could either just drop into the office, I'm not requiring appointment, drop in when it's convenient for you, complete the measurements, go home and then at another time, complete the appointment virtually, or have those measurements sent in from your provider. We really think this could work well for working families, you know, drop in, get your height weight hemoglobin measurements completed on your way to work, drop the kids off at daycare, and then later in the day or another time, complete the appointment virtually.
Ms. J, do we find that our, our healthcare providers are referring regularly for WIC? Because I know in some other early childhood areas for developmental screenings and for example, there's not consistency in referrals. So what's happening with WIC?
The majority of our referrals are word of mouth.
I'm sorry.
Our word of mouth, mhm, from client to client.
So we're not finding that our medical providers, when a woman is, you know, is determined to be pregnant, aren't making an automatic referral?
Yeah, we, we do see the referrals for pregnant women better than children. Because I think pregnant women, it's more in your forefront of your mind, but I think there still could be improvements.
Yeah, this is a, I'm sorry to hear it, because this is a continuing story for many years of not having that awareness of those healthcare providers to see the community partners for referral. That's, that's unfortunate.
So Sheila, when the client level dropped years ago, I mean, I tried to initiate talk to Public Health, we went to the providers, went to United Way to say, how do we spread the word? It's there, and apparently, it hasn't been as successful as we want. But the client, the flow is up, so people are hearing about it.
Well, it also means that we have to do more with our own marketing, social media, building community awareness. But as Public Health looks to develop our stronger partnerships, having that kind of, we've got a system now where discharges are referred for follow-up, for, for care coordination. Be worthy of looking at how we get the partnership stronger for the early childhood and pregnancy, prenatal to five referrals, so.
Agree, yes.
Alright, well, maybe we can make that a strategic initiative, so, thank you.
Yes, the other thing that would be extremely helpful is sharing of height weight and hemoglobins. There is a new pilot program, partnership between MDH WIC and Minnesota AAP. And I think it's HCMC, I can't remember which, which facility in the cities, where somehow, using Epic, that information could be automatically sent to WIC, you know, with just a check mark or something like that. That would be extremely helpful. And then we also hope to expand our WIC pop-up clinics and look to other locations where we can do those clinics as well. So what's on the horizon? We do have a new data system in 2023, so hopefully, it's faster than our current one. And a very exciting is a grant to pilot online book shopping. MDH WIC has a grant, Hy-Vee is involved, as well as State of Iowa. And so working together, we are hoping to, I'm just so excited about this, I can't even hardly explain how exciting this would be for our clients to not have to go to the store. And like, and like Commissioner Brown stated, the stigma of being at the store does continue, even though it is better. Just having this option for our clients, the shopping experience is daunting, it's confusing. And even though we do our best to explain and help clients along the way, I think this would be something that would just really improve our services. And so I'm very excited about this possibility. There's a number of proposals nationally. And last week, there was a White House Conference on Nutrition and Hunger. And out of that conference came many of these proposals that I've listed here, as well, as well as many others. And I think it might be good to have a little historical context here. The last time there was a White House Conference on Nutrition and Hunger was 1969. And out of that, out of that conference came the WIC program. So I have high hopes that, again, we can have some really good things come out of this conference. And one other thing that they talked about was really thinking about nutrition and food as medicine. And I think that's really important for us in the WIC program as well. Because food insecurity is not just about having enough to eat, it's about the ability to buy nutritious food. to buy nutritious foods and, you know, having the nutritious foods to have our bodies be as healthy as possible. So I think that programs like the WIC program, that that's vital to think about, is it's not just the food we're providing, it's also the nutrition education. And the fact that we provide nutritious food can make the difference in our family's health in the long run. I also think that it speaks to equity. Because if we want a truly equitable food security and health system, it's vital that it works together. So we'll continue to break down barriers and enroll as many, hopefully every eligible family into our program. This is a picture of our current WIC staff. They are a resourceful, caring and resilient group. And without their great work, this program doesn't move forward. So I just want to shout out to them as well.
So I just have one other question, Ms. Chair. Do we, are you tracking the clients in terms of, of, you know, do we, are we only getting people who live within Rochester? Are we serving every community? Or do we have the kind of representation from our diverse communities? Is there a community that doesn't tend to come to, to WIC? You know, is that the, is a Hispanic community missing, for instance? Or is a Somali community missing? Do we, do we have data there that we're looking so we can target outreach?
Yes, yeah, we do have that data. We do have our, our caseload by, by communities and also looking, yeah, looking at that equity factor. We, there are, there is hesitancy among our Hispanic families. Even though WIC is not part of public charge, there is a lot of hesitancy to enroll in WIC. And so that is something that we continue to work on and provide education. But still, many families choose not to participate for that reason.
Great.
Chair, well, thank you so much for the presentation. And thank you for your staff, for, for the work that they do. I think that you've presented a whole bunch of ideas. For instance, you're, you model a, a way of getting people involved in, in WIC that other departments can look at of how you model that and how that they might be able to improve participation. The other thing is, is that brain development is so very, very important, which many people miss out on. Obviously, the earlier in life that a person gets good nutrition, the better the brain development. And it, all of this stuff fits into how the county operates. And very few people see the county as a whole of many, many little parts. But you have one very, very important part of that. Because overall, we're all interested in making sure that everybody in the county has a pathway to success and a pathway to sustainability. And part of that process is to have a healthy lifestyle from the beginning so that they have the advantages that everybody else has when they get to school, that they're school-ready, they're ready to learn, that their brain is developed enough so that they can learn at the same rate that other people can learn at and not fall behind. It's really important that this is a very important part of closing gaps that we've looked at with some of our other communities to say that we want to get this information out. The other piece that I really think is important that it's, that all of us should look at is, is that we have a very difficult problem sometimes in communicating these things to the community. Commissioner Cascades questions about, does this, do you get referrals from physicians? Do you get referrals from here? But more and more, it's up to the county to promote our own programs and to tell people about them because we're not getting the help that I think that we should get from other parts of the community. You've done that very well. And I congratulate you on that. But I think it's a model that we need to look at for other things, is that we have to emphasize the fact that the county does so many things that people are not aware of that we do. And it all goes with a great big package of making sure that everybody rises, everybody has the opportunities to succeed. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, the joint study on racism as a public health issue final report. Or a bit more Denise? I'm sorry.
I'm back.
You're back.
Good morning, Commissioners. Denise Daniels, Director of Public Health.
Julian Curry, Human Research Director.
So we're here this morning to introduce the great work that has been done over the last two years, led by the joint sponsorship of the Public Health Services Advisory Board and the Human Rights Commission. We have nine volunteers from both of those volunteer boards. Remember, these are volunteer boards. Many of these individuals with full-time jobs already that have given their time to this very important project. We also, I think before we hand it over to them, I want to acknowledge a lot of people have been involved in this. It took a lot of time, effort and energy from it, from many. Chairman Tye, thank you for being the liaison to this group from the county board. Our PAC team, an incredible amount of time from Deb Eric Miller's team as well. I would have to say our, what do we call it, Amy and Abby? The dynamic duo of the A's, super A's of Amy or of Abby Tricker, who can't be with us today, she might be joining us online, and Amy Lebel. And then all of the volunteers, which I'm going to really quickly, some of them will be presenting today, but not all of them. But I think it's super important that we acknowledge all of them. If they could stand up quick and if willing, come to the podium and introduce themselves. Just a tremendous amount of work that's been done here.
Good morning. My name's Stephanie Heim, and I'm on the Public Health Services Advisory Board.
I'm Grace Pash. I was a member of the Public Health Services Advisory Board.
Melon Sassenberg, member of the Human Rights Commission.
Paula Skezfeld, the Human Rights Commission.
Kristen Fisher, Public Health Services Advisory Board.
Angie Moran, Public Health Services Advisory Board.
Donna Long, Human Rights Commission.
And Lindsay Fopot, Public Health Services Advisory Board. And then we also need to acknowledge all of the citizens, community groups, diversity council, CMRC, just a vast array of groups that also provided input with this, as well as those, the most important with lived experience. So Julian, anything else before we hand it over?
County staff.
Ton of county staff. I tried to acknowledge Public Health Human Resources, PAC team, county attorney's office, administration.
And the endless departments that came and shared the work that they're doing.
So without further ado, we're going to hand it over to one of our A's, the A-team, the A-team we call them, Amy Lebel.
Thank you, Amy.
Also like to say Valerie Melson is part of the subgroup, but she is in medical school right now. So she is part of the Public Health Services Advisory Board. Thank you Denise and Julian. Hello, good morning, Chair of the Board and Commissioners. My name is Amy Lebel. I'm a management analyst with the Policy Analysis and Communications Department, assigned to this project. And yeah, I have a note, Abby Tricker is on her way home and she's tuning in the live stream. So she, otherwise she for sure would be here. I will cover a couple of things, a level set about background, context. We're going to go back in our time machine a little bit, back to 2020. And then we will hand this off to the subgroup to talk a little bit more about the process findings. They will go through all of the nine focus areas and highlight a couple of items. So at that time, I would recommend having that report ready because they will reference page numbers on that. And last but not least, just want to say what a privilege and a pleasure it has been to work with this extraordinary group of volunteers, as well as my colleagues. You heard from Julian and Denise how many departments were involved. And to me, it's, it's truly has been like, it takes a village. I saw that on a slide earlier, but so much, so much staff has been involved with this as well. That's on me, that's right Clara. Got to use my handy dandy remote. Okay. So like I said, we are, it is the beginning of 2020. And with it, a new virus has surfaced called the novel coronavirus or COVID-19. It was unexpected and it would highlight the widespread health disparities found within our communities of color. These disparities are linked back to the impacts of systemic or structural racism. And a need was identified to study this issue. And this strange study sanctioned and supported by this Board of Commissioners is an example of jurisdictions taking intentional steps to understand and investigate existing systems. So on August 4th, 2020, there was a board resolution that was signed by this current seated Board of Commissioners. And it directed two of its advisory groups, the Human Rights Commission and the Public Health Services Advisory Board, to study race and racism as a public health issue and report back findings and recommendations. In that time, shortly after that resolution was passed, there was two activities specifically we're going to highlight that were done, part of that project planning. And some of you may remember, as assigned to the advisory boards, we did a survey asking, what do we need? What are the requirements for project success? The other that involves the works of art, as I call them, the journey map and the guidelines, the subgroup will cover those. And taking that information, we used that to develop our charter. So that next level of like, what is this project going to do? So I'm going to highlight a couple of those items, one of those being the goal statement. So what we came down to was that the PHSAB, HRC will jointly study and investigate racial disparities that result from systemic racism as a public health issue with special emphasis on the services the county provides and present complete findings and recommendations to the county board. The other item to highlight is the scope. We heard from especially, right, our Board of Commissioners, things need to be in our control. Like it, it can't be world, right? Our world is Olmsted County, our world is Olmsted County organization. So as you see highlighted, processes, services, things we provide. And I know the recommendations build on the work that we're already doing as an organization. Also in scope, we heard from you, worked in other communities, it's that letter E, what's happening in other jurisdictions? What can we borrow? Why reinvent the wheel? The other item we heard crucial from the board, also from our stakeholders, community members, or especially members from the advisory boards, was we want to hear from the community. Also in the charter was what was not in scope. Organizations not within our control, such as Rochester Public Schools, Rochester Police. And finally, important to, this PowerPoint, the subgroup members helped, as well as staff helped us build. But one of the things they called out was that this board is innovative. And I wanted to tie it back to our scorecard, our 2022 scorecard for this organization. One of the values is innovation. This is a novel, we're novel in our approach by having two advisory groups, volunteer advisory groups, right? To lead the development of organizational recommendations. The processes that you'll hear more about from the subgroup allowed for hearing directly from constituents, you know, our residents. And last but not least, just want to highlight a couple of items that according to the public health, American Public Health Association, who are tracking resolutions, declarations, declaring racism as a public health issue, we are one of 250, 256 entities in the nation that have made this declaration. And in the state of Minnesota, we are one of two counties that have made this declaration, Hennepin County being the other. I would like to invite Kristen from the subgroup.
Yes, thank you. So we already introduced ourselves, but one more time, we are the group of volunteers that joined this joint study. Here's a lovely picture of what a lot of our meetings looked like virtually over these past two years. And so I'm going to dive a little bit deeper into our study timeline and how we've gotten to this point. So like Amy mentioned, starting in 2020, at the end of 2020 was this board's resolution. And when we started project planning, independent facilitator was found to bring our two groups together and help define that next layer of work. That's where our guidelines and our journey map was formed. It was also at the end of 2020 that our volunteer subgroup was formed and we started doing some of those initial actions of developing a work plan and identifying tasks. Then, starting in 2021, we developed that charter at the beginning of the year. And then we really spent the majority of the year diving into the data. So we reviewed population level data from this county, from sources like the Community Health Needs Assessment, the Residential Survey and the COVID Impact Study to look at some quantitative data. We also heard from many of the folks that were mentioned by Denise and Julian, of folks from the county, to hear about their experiences, their ideas for improvement and things that were working. All of that, by the end of the year, we came up with a set of draft recommendations that we shared with both of our boards. Which brings us to this year, 2022. And so this year has really been focused on taking those draft recommendations and having them reviewed by the community. So we held, our engagement sessions were held with Olmsted County staff, community organizations and partners throughout the county to review these draft recommendations and give input. We also heard from folks with lived experience, BIPOC folks from our community, from sessions led by the Diversity Council. And then we had also a general public survey that was available online for folks to review. Those, all of that data and results were analyzed for us by wonderful county staff and shared with us. And so then throughout this summer, we took that data and adjusted our draft recommendations to form the final recommendations, which we have delivered to you today. So I'm going to pass it off to Steph now to talk a little bit more about those community engagement sessions.
Okay, so there's this slide which articulates the, and summarizes the three engagement sessions that were led by Olmsted County staff. You'll see that it's broken down into three distinct groups. So Olmsted County employees, community organizations, and then we had an online public survey. So all three of those engagement sessions led to 362 kind of data points collected. You can see that of that 362, 23% identified as Black, Indigenous or person of color. And 61% of those participants identified as being from Rochester. And you can see kind of a even split of age categories. This is, there's a lot on this slide, but we just wanted, in some ways, to highlight this because the, as Kristen mentioned, the staff who helped us analyze the data did a really fantastic job disaggregating the data so we can make meaning of it. So in this next slide, the fourth engagement session was led, as people have already mentioned, by the Diversity Council. And there were eight focus groups. And you can see here 162 participants in one of these eight focus groups and sort of participating communities participated. So you can see, one of the things that our group did, and you'll get into this in the recommendations, is we wanted to get a sense of if our community members who participated in these BIPOC-led sessions and led by the Diversity Council, if they had different things to say about the impact of systemic racism. So we'll get into that in just a little bit. The last thing here that I want to just highlight, and this is Commissioner Tye, you recommended that we pull out and ask during our engagement sessions, people who participated to sort of frank the impact of the series of focus areas on the impact for systemic racism. So we just wanted to highlight here, you can see criminal justice, housing, rental assistance, homeownership are at the top. So again, we're studying racism as a public health issue and criminal justice and housing are at the top. I'm going to transfer or hand it over now, I think, to Grace.
So you just got to see a preview of some of
So you just got to see a preview of some of our focus areas, our draft focus areas. Some of the verbiage has changed. And some of these focus areas may seem a bit removed from the concept of health for some of us. However, health is so much more than just the type of care that we receive at the doctor's office. And so we wanted to highlight the county health rankings model here on screen. And this is a framework that outlines the numerous factors that influence an individual's health. So the percentages next to the darker blue boxes, let's see if I can use my little spotlight here. These boxes here, they show how much influence that each of those factors have over someone's health. And so I would first like to note that the social and economic factors there, such as employment and community safety, influence nearly 40% of a person's health outcomes. And to put this into context, if someone works the graveyard shift and doesn't feel safe in their neighborhood, they may experience higher levels of stress, which then can result in high blood pressure and other health issues such as heart issues. So one thing that isn't on this model, but is well known in research, is the impact that race has on health outcomes. Our local community health needs assessment consistently highlights the disparities in health outcomes for our neighbors of color compared to our white neighbors. And so in this innovative and varied democratic approach, we felt that hearing from those community members directly who are experiencing those disparate outcomes would be the best source of knowledge to ensure that Olmsted County can provide the foundation of a vibrant community. Now we will get into our focus areas. So our first focus area is accountability. So this is something that both Olmsted County leadership and the community members agreed was necessary for the success of this process. When other communities around the coun, around the country, excuse me, have embarked on assessments or projects that aim to understand race and racism's role in impacting the health of their community members, they highlighted the need for processes to track their progress and report that back to the community's leaders and to the community members generally. So our recommendation, as laid out on page 17 of the report, is to create a cross-sector accountability board that will establish processes to monitor progress, report on progress, and identify areas for improvement. They will work with community members to ensure that these metrics are built with community members in mind. Our second focus area is advisory boards. As elected officials, you have a deep passion for serving your constituents. Advisory boards are a great opportunity for community members to provide feedback and guidance to Olmsted County leadership on how they are serving the community. In any good democratic process, everyone has the opportunity to influence change. To ensure that our advisory boards include rich diversity of place of employment, residency in the county, as well as race and ethnicity, our recommendation is to reduce barriers to participation. And I will hand it over to Angie for our next one.
So our next focus area is criminal justice. And as you had seen in the previous slide, this focus area was weighted the highest on the impact for systemic racism. And the aim of this focus area was to remove barriers to those currently in crisis and those with a history in criminal justice systems to achieve independent living. And we also wanted to make sure that we had support and Olmsted County staff training, indeed escalation practices. So I just wanted to highlight one recommendation within this focus area. We had a total of five recommendations, but the one that I wanted to highlight was to work with community partners to ensure free expungement processes so that they are readily available to people who have committed minor offenses to remove barriers to housing, employment, et cetera. And we wanted to note that other communities are successfully doing this work. So again, looking at other communities within our study. And we did note that other communities were doing similar things in this area. The next focus area is within customer service. So we had four total recommendations within this focus area. And we wanted, the aim of this focus area was to support practices that gather the voice of Olmsted County customers and recipients. Just as the presentation earlier with WIC, we want to also do this within the area of customer service. So the recommendation that I wanted to highlight was recommendation number 10, which assess all county services for awareness of and accessibility to BIPOC residents and persons served in the approach of that there is no wrong door. So what this means is that regardless of a person's initial contact point with Olmsted County, they can access any service for which they qualify. And again, this kind of goes back to the previous presentation on WIC as well. And looking even further into other services that the county provides. The last focus area that I will talk about is the data collection and use. So our aim statement was to maximize and streamline Olmsted County data systems. And we had a total of four recommendations within this focus area. And I want to highlight at one of our first meetings, our subcommittee meetings, our county board liaison, Commissioner Tine, had expressed the importance of being able to measure success and know if we are making progress within all of our recommendations. So that I wanted to highlight recommendation number 13, which invests in infrastructure for secure data systems within the Olmsted County agencies to capture and organize data that the county is already regularly collecting on persons that it serves. And then these systems should be efficient, interoperable, and timely across departments so that we know we're moving in the right direction. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Paula.
Financial health was ranked fourth in terms of its potential to impact systemic racism. One of the four recommendations in this area addresses emergency assistance and the need to ensure community members are not falling through the cracks. Currently, emergency funding is only for specific uses and requires that applicants first be denied support through other community programs. A second recommendation supports the expansion of an Olmsted County Integrated Services Program that would allow financial assistance for individuals or families that are experiencing poverty and also would address problems with the benefits cliff, which is a loss in government benefits that is larger than an increase in wages. Addressing these issues will give community members the ability to improve their overall financial situation. Data from the community engagement sessions reinforces the need to address both of these issues. In the area of housing, rental assistance and homeownership were ranked by the community as second and third in terms of their potential to address the issue of systemic racism. Although homelessness ranked lower, county data indicate that across all three areas, homelessness, rental assistance, and homeownership, there are large disparities by race. For example, 77% of Olmsted County residents own their homes, while only 22% of Black families do. As you know, discriminatory and now illegal practices, such as redlining and racial covenants, both here in Olmsted County and in the nation, have contributed to the low rate of homeownership among Blacks over time and in turn, the accumulation of intergenerational wealth among Black families. Indeed, data from the Maxfield Study indicate that Black community members have the highest percentage of renter occupied households in the county. Because rents climb regularly, while the cost of a mortgage decreases relative to income, a key recommendation is to increase BIPOC homeownership with a focus on shifting BIPOC renters to owners. In addition, there is a continued need for affordable and subsidized rental housing in Olmsted County, according to the Maxfield Study. Given that 80% of county clients needing rental housing assistance are people of color, low inventory and voucher wait lists fall disproportionately on them. We recommend increasing the number of affordable, subsidized, and rental options in the county. Finally, Olmsted County data indicate that homelessness affects Blacks in the community more when considering them the percent of the population that they represent. We recommend improving the process, including coordinated entry for housing people across the housing continuum, emergency shelter, transitional housing, supportive housing, subsidized housing, and affordable market rate housing. I'm going to turn it over to, I think Donna is next.
So this focus area of organizational culture and systems is foundational. Without this, nothing will happen. So our aim for this is to foster a welcoming community that values belonging, equity, diversity, and dignity in people and ideas. There are seven recommendations in this focus area. And we wanted to highlight to number 30, strengthen organization culture with strategies to support all five basic human needs of belonging, respect, choice, or freedom, physical and psychological safety, and joy. And then our next focus area is mental health and substance use. Now, it's all intersectionality with criminal justice, homelessness, financial health, mental health, and substance use are again, all interrelated. There are a total number of recommendations of six in this focus area. The aim is to promote strategies to reduce stigma and barriers in BIPOC communities in the area of mental health and increase access to culturally sensitive providers. Support strategies that prevent substance use, reduce harm, and support resiliency and recovery. So mental health and substance use are the providers, what the service is, all context related. So number 40 is what we're highlighting as our recommendation. Inventory and expand access to culturally relevant mental health and substance use services.
Thank you, Donna. Now I'd like to hand off to our county administrator, Heidi Welsh.
Good morning Commissioners. For the record, I'm Heidi Welsh, the administrator. And they asked me to round out this presentation for you, which is really going to highlight how I don't know the technology, as I should. There we go, awesome. Yeah, so just a little slide here, just reminding you of how many folks participated. You saw all of our wonderful volunteers. And they, as you know, two years' worth of work, so we just want to thank them. And that is in your resolution, and I know you're going to have, I know you're going to want to thank them individually. So I think that in addition to talking about, these are the folks that have been involved internally, I want to talk a little bit about how will we move forward if you in fact resolve, as is in your packet, pass this resolution which directs staff to move forward. We do have staffing prepared, should you move forward. And the way this will work pragmatically, we will divide up the recommendations from the groups and assign those to board committees. So that means to Health Housing Human Services, to the, some of them will probably go to the admin committee. I'm not sure that there are any for physical development, but maybe. There's a few that probably would be best suited for the legislative committee. And then finally, there are some that I think would make best sense to send to the Olmsted County Justice Committee, the OCJC. So we would divide those up, and of course, you know, we have staffing in all of those committees, and start the work of thinking about, okay, can we move forward straight away? Do we need to do more research to think about how to implement this? Or if there are some that we can't figure out how to implement right away, are there some interim steps we could take, that kind of work? And then those discussions will come to the board committees. And that's how, how it will come back to you. Let's see, so let me see, I think there's one more slide from me, which is a little bit what I talked about. Yes, Amy, did I cover everything you wanted me to cover? And with it, that brings us to reactions, questions, and answers. And maybe I can just stand here and help. Liaison, I expect you may have questions or comments for the volunteers.
Well, they always know I'm going to have the first set of questions. Well, I, I think this has just been a remarkable endeavor on the part of all of the, all of you. And so I think we're, I'm sure you'll have many expressions of gratitude, but thank you very much for the work that you have done on this topic. It's a difficult topic. We have, as a, as a, as a society, we have trouble talking about these issues. And it's, it's, it's not, it's, it sometimes leads us into perilous times where there's a lot of emotion. On the other hand, it's, it's a conversation that we need to have as a community. And I am actually kind of affirmed to see that so much of what you heard from the broader community are things that I know that Olmsted County is already looking at in many ways. And it's, it's, it's in some ways an affirmation. So for instance, this year, I'm chair of the Olmsted County Justice Coordinating Council. And that's a chairmanship that rotates. And that, you probably don't know about that group, but that's, has every, you know, has the county and city attorney. It has judges, has public defenders, has the sheriff and the police chief, has the mayor, has the city council president, has social services director. So it looks at how do we have our justice system coordinate to run smoothly? We put together a work group on equity within the justice system in 2021. And our, that work group is now making three recommendations to the full OCJC for continuation work. And remarkably, number one on it is data. Is let's really look at how we have data systems so that we can, we can look at what, what's happening within our system. And so I see a lot of consistency. And then I also have the pleasure of serving on the Coalition for Affordable Housing. And so the work that you've talked about in terms of BIPOC, of homeownership, of rental assistance, is also consistent with work that's going on there. And I think I just, I'm really encouraged because, like I said, in some ways, you're affirming work that's, and conclusions that have been reached independent of your work. It's a, it's an affirmation. You've also brought it further into some specifics. And you've had the conversations with people with lived experience in ways that other groups haven't, but maybe, maybe will as we move forward. And so I think you've given us a, a good blueprint. And I think that, you know, I, I was trying to note the things that you, you, I should have started sooner that you talked about because I went through your whole report last night. It's very, it's very complete. And then I just want to also talk, sometimes we have, always go to our own experience. And I want to relate an experience that I had as an Olmsted County staffer way, way back in the seventies, when the county board asked a citizen group to look at our community response to child abuse. And then we had a domestic violence. And that work group worked for two years, just like you did, came up with a set of recommendations, five-year plan, that actually Olmsted County completely implemented. And we were at the very cutting edge of that conversation back in the seventies. There wasn't even agreement about a definition of domestic violence. And so you are leading us again, as citizens, to look at, what are we doing well? Where can we do more? How do we really, how do we really learn and grow from this changing conditions around us? And how do we be the, how do we aspire to, and achieve some of our goals around being a welcoming and inclusive community that supports the development of all? I mean, that's not our official motto, but that's, you know, so that's, I'm just happy with your report, happy to have the guidance. And at least three of us will continue to be on the board, including our board chair and our incoming chair, I'm assuming, for, for continuity as we get new board members, some of whom may be in this room, for continuity as we get new board members, some of whom may be in this room, to talk about why this was important work and why this provides guidance for a whole variety of discussions into the future for Olmsted County. These aren't the kind of things, as you well know, that you can say, oh, one and done, we're going to do this. This is a process. It's, it's, it's a process of awakening, of seeing what needs to be done, and then doing the, the actual work and measuring progress along the way. So, I just really want to thank you for two years of your volunteer time to provide good, wise counsel, and I'm relieved candidly that it is so congruent with things that we've already been aware of and are attempting to work on. So, thank you very much. I don't really have specific questions about any, I only have one specific question about recommendations, but I don't want to bore everybody with my minutia, so.
Matt?
Well, Sheila, I want to thank the volunteers and staff for working on this. I kind of got a history of this, and actually, I got a brochure. You're following up what we did twenty years ago, and I'll give this book to you. And ninety percent of it is exactly what you've been saying, you know, criminal justice, housing, mental health, and we have worked on, we have the mental health facility at the campus, we're working on housing. So, we don't have to read it at the wheel here, because this was talked about twenty years ago and signed by pretty much all the officials back then. So, you're following, now I'm just trying to do some action instead of just talk. I just want to summarize, you know, but again, this is a priority to the citizens. So, again, Heidi, take this book if you don't have it. I'm cleaning out my desk. And again, ninety percent of it is exactly what we've been talking about for years.
Twenty-first Century Partnership Community Strategic Plan for Diversity. I hadn't seen that before, so, thank you for cleaning your desk.
I got more comments, so don't.
Mr. Chair, thank you. You know, first of all, thank you for all the people on the panel. I was early on part of the Human Services Committee, and then also with Public Health, so I got to know some of you people on that. And I think it's really good for the community to know that we have folks well-intentioned in order to look at the weak points of the county. And it's also good that the county board is strong enough to say, okay, we may have some weak points, let's examine them, let's figure out how we're going to fix them and shore those up and make our county better. So, I think that that's the overall process, is that we have been a shining star in the state of Minnesota and throughout the nation, that they look at those things. Your work helps us to do that. And to Commissioner Flynn's point, I think it's up to the county board, this one and the next one, to make sure that it isn't shelved for twenty years, and then we dig it out in twenty years and say, gee, we did that back in 2022, but to keep it in front of all of the departments, to say that we need to continue to work on that, and that's to the other point about the accountability, to say, let's have some measures, let's see how we're doing this, and let's have a regular report on this. So, I think that all of those things are very good, so thank you very much for your good work.
All right, well, I'll jump in first. I think my role in this has been overblown, so I feel guilty even seeing my name on it. And I, looking at the hours that you guys have put in, it's amazing, and I really appreciate. And I think it's a great example of how Olmsted County can and should continue to engage with people in our community because we are lucky to live in such a great community with so many smart and dedicated people. So, I really appreciate your work you did, and I look forward to seeing where this will take us. So, thank you.
So, I look for a motion, I assume?
Yeah, we'll look for a motion.
Move to accept the report.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Passes, thank you all. Let's go have a, I think it's yogurt or something, usually cake, but we're having something healthy. All right, we'll take a recess for ten minutes.
Something healthy is something?
Something healthy because it's public health. So, let's take a ten-minute recess to have something.
Abby was just speaking.
Abby?
We got both, and Jim Gafford says it's a public health.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Perfect, Abby, thank you. All right, well, we sat some, we can have a.
Cross jurisdiction.
This is still really big.
That's still.
But it's the same form, like say nine percent, if you read it, I read both, nine percent is the exact same level.
Mr. Chair, I think we might want a picture with the volunteers, they'd be right here in the boardroom before we recess. Want to do the picture? Heidi, you want to give us some directions, you want us?
Please stand behind it.
Heidi, you're sharing together, Heidi, all the volunteers here. I'd say in front of the, in front of the, you.
Sheila, we're going with you.
I'm trying to remember what I was going to report on. I did, did mention the Olmsted County Justice Council has finishing its Equity Work Group. There was something I was going to be sure to call out to the board, and I'm not remembering, so I will just pass.
Okay. Stephanie, do you have a report? Ken?
I'm sorry, I have several minutes worth, but at the moment, I think with ROCOG, we had ROCOG, and we approved the twenty-three to twenty-six Transportation Improvement Plan, and you know, some other initiatives, but that's the biggie. So, when you, when you look at it, you know, those are the kind of things that we just continue regularly working on approving and making sure that transportation system adhered to all the federal regulations and so on. And an interesting discussion ensued, saying, you know, why isn't the interchange on this? And had to explain it a couple of times, that these are only things that have money programmed to provide, right? And given the cost of that project, somebody said, well, I mean, if we prioritize that, none of this stuff would get done because of the cost. So, it's, people have got to realize, these are things that have been worked on for a long time, put in plan, have funding sources, and we as yet do not have a funding source that we're hoping for, for the interchange. And at Physical Development, we talked, yeah, there are three lanes that now looking into early next year, and I'll stop in a minute. Commerce, quarters of commerce, we have a line item there, we have bonding, and we have a sent transportation bill. If any one of those things passes, we will take a small piece, very small piece, of the ten billion dollars that the state is now sitting on, doing nothing with it other than watching inflation consume it. There, I'm done.
Did anybody in ROCOG, did, did they do a drone view of what's happened to now the intersection at County Road twenty-two?
No, but it's come up, and there were comments that they've received, people have received from the public, and said, you know, suddenly, what happened? I mean, they were surprised. Couldn't there have been a little better thought, solution, or warning about what's going on? And I mean, you know the story, if you were in ROCOG, you know it dramatically. Said, we don't need this, don't spend the money here, we're going to get the interchange, let's.
I would think that if, and I can suggest that to public works, if they had the drone video, yes, unbelievable problem that this has created, and it should go back to the legislature to say, here's what you've done.
We could, we could do that.
I know this isn't a committee report, but I've gone by that intersection a lot of times, and I see the yellow barriers things up. That looks sufficient to me. I don't understand why they're going to be spending money on this median fence as well. Just to say, in terms of, if they were going to, if they have that kind of money, why not fix the intersection?
The high-tension cable thing is a debate.
I don't understand that.
Because it isn't clear, I've heard ways, both sides probably have, it's not clear how really safe that is. Does it really prevent crossovers? Does it cause more damage? Can it be a problem of them flying up into the car, et cetera, et cetera? So, it's another one of these things that, the data, the J-turns, at one more, I'll stop. Discussion with District Six, Matt had said, you know, get ahead for this interim solution if you just put an acceleration lane on the turn, so it doesn't look like an ad hoc intersection. And he says, well, you know, there's not that much room in the median. If you drive by, there's like thirty or forty feet. We can carve out eleven feet for a lane for acceleration. That would make it eminently safer, right? Positioning it so that if somebody wants to make that right turn, they have time to get into it, get up to speed, move over, just like ramps are meant to do for merging onto highways. This is a merge. So, we didn't agree on anything, actually, but we are what we are, and I'm hoping, hoping, hoping that first thing they do is don't rewrite these things, just, you know, put a new number on it, a date, and submit it and get it done first thing in the session. With all the new people, hopefully, there's not this drag, or I have to educate myself again, or get started. Be hopeful, all you can do is, is continue to hope and lobby and beg to do this. But I hold them all accountable, Republicans, Democrats, Senate, House, and especially the governor, who had the ability to call a special session and bring them back. And this couldn't be done over the phone. I've talked to Senor, I've talked to others, you've got to bring people in. It's an election year, you'd be amazed at how much can get done. When you sit them down, take them out of their district, sit them down and say, no, make a deal.
Right.
Sheila knows all about this. Yeah, I'm done, I'm not, you won't have to listen to that much longer.
Take a tape recording and just.
I did think of something.
Sheila.
I, I did think of something, but I went to the Community Corrections Counties Convention or annual meeting last week, and we have been working, the Community Corrections Counties have been working with the, with, there's three correction systems in the state of Minnesota. There's state corrections officers, probation, parole probation officers, there's county probation officers, and then there's community corrections. And what's been happening for several years in the state of Minnesota is, when the budgets get done, the state agencies get the full funding, and the counties are not getting the funding that we are supposed to get. We were down at one time to twenty-nine percent of what statutorily was required to be sent to counties. That was more for the county probation rather than community corrections, but community corrections also was low. So, last year, there was an effort on the part of the Association of Counties and others to get the legislature to, to correct that, to invest, and it ended up in a formula fight. And so, it ended up not passing that last year's legislative session. The good news is, this year, the Department of Corrections, the county probation system, and community corrections have had a separate work group, and they have come up with a formula that they can all agree to. So, we came really close last year to getting it passed, and it died at the end, and I know I've talked to Travis Grantsey about this, and he's like, well, we've tried for so many years, but it looks like it's worth trying one more time. And so, we've been asked, as, there aren't many county commissioners who go to that meeting, I think there were five of us out of a hundred and eight, and we were, we are being encouraged to ask to have this issue come into the Association of Minnesota Counties' agenda, the MICA agenda, and for our own legislative agendas. So, I'm just kind of calling that out, it's something for our legislative committee. There's a corollary then that's going on over in public health. I'm currently in the, leading as the chair of the State Committee of Advisory Council. The state of Minnesota has also fallen behind on what should be happening with, with the framework for, for public health. One of the nice things about public health compared to some of other systems is there really is more of a partnership between local public health and the state agencies, and there's fewer, there's like fifty-one local public health entities instead of eighty-seven, you know, counties. And there's a, there's an effort there also, but it did come out of the AMC Policy Committee meeting as one of the top priorities, that we urge our legislators to invest in the continuation of redoing, transforming public health for modern needs. And so, I just wanted to call that out to everybody that those are two things that attending some of those statewide meetings are, is an emerging consensus among other counties that they will be hoping Olmsted County will also support.
All right. Okay, before.
Quote.
I got a quote, I got, we're going to give one report for change. So, just want to point out that Heidi Welsh and Mary Blair Smith and I met with, I think, five members of the people that have been coming to our board meetings, and we met for over two hours, and I give kudos to Heidi and Mary Blair Smith that they had, they were very prepared, and I think they answered the concerns for the most part, and the people that were in attendance at that meeting were very civil and earnest, so I think we've made progress towards answering their concerns, so I appreciate that.
Thank you for doing that.
Maybe not.
No comment.
Okay, all right, I'll end it with a quote, this is from Martin Luther King, he wrote it from an Alabama jail on April sixteenth, nineteen sixty-three. He says, "We are caught in an inescapable network of mutuality tied in a single garment of destiny. Whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly." I'll take a motion.
It's almost, okay.
Favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you. All right, we have a ten-minute break before we get, you need with the syrup or?
Yeah, I was going to say. Something after this?